Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Spokane City Council Legislative Session for November 2nd, 2020. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Council President begs.
Present.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Mum.
Here.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right. I'm going to take us in a little different order today so that staff who are presenting can go first and go home, and that will save some of our other matters, including Resolution 2020-0080 on Assembly of Private and Armed Militias, probably closer to the end. So with that in mind, I think I'm going to invite Paul and Josie to open up hearing number one, but I'll actually have the clerk read hearing number one.
H1 Public Hearing on 2021 Proposed Budget.
Paul, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you again, Council President and Councilmembers. Just wanted to say hi before I again stop my video and switch over to PowerPoint. If I could have access to share, please. So again, good evening, Council President and Councilmembers. My name is Paul Josie. I'm the Director of Management and Budget for the city. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a quick overview and some highlights for the mayor's 2021 Final Proposed Budget. This evening, we're going to take a look at the total citywide proposed budget for 2021, focus on the general fund portion, and conclude with a note or two on budget documents and next steps in the budget process. So overall, citywide revenue for 2021 is projected to be $901 million. You can see in purple, the largest category, around 30% of our citywide revenue is charges for services, which covers user fees from our enterprise funds or translated utility bills. The second largest category, in blue, at approximately 26%, are taxes. This covers property, sales, and utility, among other smaller taxes. You'll see later on, taxes are the primary revenue source for the general fund, almost 81%. Intergovernmental revenue and other revenue make up a combined 40% and includes state and federal grants, distributions from the state, and transfers between funds. And while we're projecting over $900 million in revenue, we actually anticipate needing $989 million in total resources. The remaining $89 million will come from retained earnings and fund balance in respective funds, more than half of which is rolling over bond funds for the library projects, as well as capital funds in the Integrated Capital Management Citywide, the $989 million is split almost evenly between enterprise funds, which include our utilities, dedicated funds, those are funds set up for specific purpose such as street maintenance, parking meters, or grants, and then general fund and internal service funds, which cover the day-to-day operation of the city. So translating those dollars into citywide services, almost 40% of the citywide budget goes to infrastructure and utility services, 23% to general government services, and 20% to public safety and judicial services. And you can see a breakdown on the right-hand side of the screen for the departments that fall under those service types. The remaining 17% are spread across Parks and Recreation, Library, Health and Human Services, and Community and Economic Development Services citywide. So you can see here how the 2021 Proposed Budget stacks up against prior year actuals, as well as the 2020 adopted budget. The bottom line literally represents the net budget. This is the budget minus any amounts we charge or transfer to ourselves, and historically, 2021 proposed is somewhere between 2018 and 2019 actual expenditures. On staffing, the 2021 Proposed Budget includes 37.4 additional staff above the 2020 adopted budget. And I wanted to point out 2020 adopted because this includes any positions that were added during 2020 through either special budget ordinances or progressive promotions, such as the City Council Quality and Inclusion Initiative Manager, and in the mayor's office, the Director of Emergency Management in the general fund. So those are ones that were not in the 2020 adopted, happened during the year, but they are reflected here in the 2021 proposed. Now shifting into the general fund, the final proposed budget includes total resources of approximately $207 million, with again 81% coming from taxes. There are a number of one-time adjustments assumed here, including a restructure of the Public Safety Equipment Internal Loan Program. And even with the adjustments, the proposed budget still requires approximately $1.6 million from unappropriated reserves in order to balance, which would be less than 1% of total resources. So this slide shows a closer look at the $168 million in general fund tax revenue, which again is about 81% of all general fund revenue. Taxes on utilities, both public and private, account for 40%. 30% comes from sales tax, and 28% from property taxes. The remaining 2% is split among admission, gambling, and excise taxes. Now assuming $207 million in resources for 2021, on that bottom row again, this is essentially a 0% change from 2020 adopted. I would note on this slide, though, that the 2019 actuals that you see include approximately $8 million in unrealized gains, so the actual actuals for 2019 were about $202 million. As for general fund expenditures, approximately 84% goes to personnel costs. The caveat on this, or the note on this, would be that the general fund does transfer out approximately $90 million to other funds such as fire, parks, and library, and assume that those dollars being transferred out are also supporting those personnel costs. Overall, the proposed budget represents a less than 1% increase in general fund expenditures from 2020 adopted If we look at the general fund expenses by service group, by far the largest category is public safety and judicial. This includes the police department, fire via the transfer out, municipal court, legal, public defender, probation, and emergency services. There's a lot going on in this slide, but it just shows the general fund expense by service group from 2019 actual through 2021 proposed, along with some explanations for some of the 2021 changes that you see. General government reflects the restructure of the Public Safety Equipment Internal Loan Program. Public safety shows the impact of moving vacant officer and firefighter positions to the public safety levee and moving the filled positions into the general fund departments. And the community enrichment section includes the charter mandated increase to Parks and Recreation. So as we begin to wrap up, we just want to give a quick user's guide to the budget documents posted on the city website that are available to the public. The first is the 2021 Final Proposed Budget Binder, which is the hard copy that you received this afternoon. It includes the mayor's budget message, an attachment responding to the budget committee resolution, a list of 2021 watch items, which Tanya Wallace talked about a little earlier today, an executive summary, and then the financial summary section. And the financial summary includes not only the 74 pages of budget schedules that you know and love, but new for this year, our budget reconciliation pages for each of the city's 120-plus funds, showing the changes from the 2020 adopted to the 2021 proposed budget. And there's an example of it on the right side of your screen, and that should be included in the budget binder as well. We hope you take a look at these and find these useful. Finally, also available on the city's website is the Detail Binder, which includes the program summary and summary line item reports. Those are also available online. That is the one, over 1,000-page printout in Courier New font that we produced in the past. As for next steps, the revenue hearing will hopefully be closed this evening. With the property tax ordinance and the resolution of substantial need will be before your next Monday evening. We need to certify by November 30th to the county for the amount being raised for property taxes for 2021. And as you may have noticed, we are currently in the budget hearing. By law, budget hearings may continue through December 7, but may be closed before then upon conclusion of testimony and before final passage of the budget ordinance. The MRSC, the Municipal Research and Services Center, recommends a minimum of three hearings on the budget, with the revenue hearing counting for one of those. And then finally, the Capital Improvement Program Ordinance is also scheduled for adoption next Monday, November 9. And that is it. Thank you for your time this evening. All the budget materials are accessible on the city website at the address you see here. Available for any questions, either email address or the budget@spokanecity.org email as well. Again, thank you for your time.
Do any council members have questions for Mr. and Josie? All right, I'm not seeing any. Is there a motion to continue the public hearing on the 2021 Proposed Budget until November 9?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the continuance indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Nay? Any abstentions? All right, we'll continue that till next week. From last week, we continued the hearing on possible revenue sources, and I'm not anticipating any further presentation from staff, but we do have a community member who wants to speak, and that would be Nicolette Oakletree. And Ms. Alge, are you going to be recognizing her, or am I going to be recognizing her?
I won.
Okay, great. All right. Nicolette, welcome to City Council. You have three minutes to talk about revenue issues.
I'm only going to take a short period of time, but I did want to remind everybody that we're coming up to our 50th anniversary of Expo 74. I think doing a 50th anniversary event in honor of Expo 74 would be a great way to generate revenue for the city, and it's something that could start generating revenue well before the event itself. Just as a reminder for everyone, Expo 74 was the first world fair with an environmental theme to it. So there was a point in time where Spokane led the world in environmental preservation. And I think if we can refocus back on that, start planning now for an event in the future, there are a lot of ways to generate revenue along the way, and that can start now. The sooner the better. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's the only testimony for that hearing. I'm looking for a motion to close the revenue sources hearing.
So moved. Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor of closing the revenue hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay? Any abstentions?
Aye.
Okay, we've got one nay from Councilmember Cathcart, and the hearing is closed. And all right, we'll move on to the next. And next, I'm going to, I was going to go to this, a couple of ordinances related to solid waste, or a few of them, actually, three of them. So if you wanted to go to 35955. Okay. Do you want me to read them all three? No, just read the, let's do them one at a time.
Okay. Ordinance C35955 relating to the rates of solid waste disposal, public utilities and services, amending Spokane Municipal Code Sections 13.02.0560, .0562.0563, and .0568, and adding a new SMC Section 13.02.0561 to Chapter 13.02 of the Spokane Municipal Code and setting an effective date.
You know what? I'm going to change my mind and have you read all three, because then Marlene can just talk about all of them. So, yeah, sorry.
Ordinance C35956 relating to the rates of solid waste collection, public utilities and services, amending Spokane Municipal Code Sections 13.02.0502, .0504, .0506, .0508, .0510, .0512, .0514, .0516, .0518, .0520, .0528, .0552, and .0554 to Chapter 13.02 of the Spokane Municipal Code, repealing 13.02.0530 and setting an effective date. And Ordinance C35954 relating to solid waste collection and recycling schedules, amending Spokane Municipal Code Section 13.02.0500 to Chapter 13.02 of the Spokane Municipal Code and setting an effective date.
All right, so we'll hear staff presentation on all three from Ms. Feist, and then we'll take them up one at a time. I have one member of the public signed up for 35954, the changing of the recycling schedules. Marlene, take it away.
Council President, this is actually Scott.
All right. Well, great, Scott. Take it away. Oh, but, sorry. Great, Scott, take it away.
All right. I'm going to share my screen here really quickly. Okay. So, good evening, Council President, Councilmembers, members of the public. I'm Scott Simmons, the city's Public Works Director, and with me is Marlene Feist, also with Public Works. We have been talking about a lot of our rates within the utilities, specifically tonight's on solid waste. We've been doing this for probably about last five months in a variety of public meetings with council, study sessions, committee reviews. Tonight in front of, in front of you is the proposal for our solid waste rates and our, and the companion ordinances that are along with it. So just a reminder and sharing with the community, we've got four rate-setting principles that have been adopted by City Council that inform on our rate-setting process, specifically in this case for our solid waste. The recommendation to City Council and to the community is we continue forward with a 2.9% increase to our solid waste collection rates, as well as our disposal rates, and these will be in place for a period of three years. I'll share with, with the council and the community on a subsequent slide, we do have a number of contracts that are coming up for renewal during the three-year period that we need to have better, an idea of what they're going to look like in a contract renewal, and that would inform on what future rates might be. We, we do have some recycling impacts that we'll share as well, and we are proposing to address those recycling impacts through changing the collection schedules for residential customers only, not our commercial subscription customers, and we'll go through that, as well as adopting a $2 transaction fee for self-hauling loads to the waste-to-energy facility. Oops. We go through a pretty robust financial projection evaluation and preparation in advance of all of our rate setting, and it shows what our projected revenues would be, as well as our expenses under this proposed rate setting and rate ordinances. One of the things that we look closely at is how are we managing our reserves within the solid waste funds, and these reserves are predominantly used for unforeseen capital and operating needs. Right now, we're projecting those to stay right around the $4 to $5 million range in the next five years. We have had a number of impacts, as have other parts of the community, with the pandemic and the business closures. This is a, a graph that shows how the COVID impacts have impacted our business accounts, with a significant drop-off in the months after the business closures. They have begun to rebound, which is the orange line. They are, they are close to our 2018 level, but are still under our 2019 level, and that has been informing on our financial actuals to budget year-to-date. This is a graph that shows how our financials are tracking within our, our revenues. It compares what our budget is, compares where our actuals are, and it also shows where, where we were in 2019 at this time. We are just slightly over budget year-to-date for 2020, and are over by about 2.4% in our 2000, against 2019 actuals. Some of the story behind what's informing on our operations and our financials is really the recycling market, the commodity market, the residual garbage. So in 2013, when we, when the city switched to a, a single-stream recycling, we were projecting at the time to break even on what our single stream would be in terms of sending the recycling materials to a, a materials recycling facility, which is what is operated by Waste Management up on the West Plains. That was due in large part due to a strong commodity market at the time. Those commodity prices have plummeted substantially in the last couple of years, which are now showing that that is, it projected to cost the, the system about $1.4 million for 2020. This graph informs a little bit deeper on what's contributing to those. Back in 13, our residual, 13 and 14 through 17 are residual garbage, which is materials that are placed into the blue bins that are really not recyclable. They're actually waste products. Went from about 8.9%, and now they're up to about 12.9%. That increases the cost of materials that are processed at the waste management facility, as well as the, the red line shows what the commodity value is for those products being sold into the, into the, into the market. Those have relatively stayed around the 1.2 to 1.4 million, and then dropped dramatically from the institution of the China Sword Policy back in 2018. So we looked around other communities to see what they were doing to address the recycling challenges that they were experiencing. And we looked at two different options. One was switching to picking up curbside every other week, which you can see the, the communities that are doing that today. Other communities were looking at, have looked at implementing and have implemented a surcharge to account for the extra recycling costs. What we've proposed doing is moving our residential curbside recycling to every other week collections. That would provide a reduction in approximately $900,000 in operating operations and maintenance, as well as some lower capital costs over time, as we wouldn't need to be purchasing as number, the number of, of garbage collection trucks for that. So this actually would allow us to have fewer personnel, fewer trucks, less fuel purchases, repair and maintenance. It does require that we will likely have to incorporate some additional 96-gallon carts for those citizens who don't have the larger cart size, and will allow them to collect their recycling products during that two-week period. This would allow us to maintain and maintain the increase to solid waste collections at our 2.9% inflationary figure. We recognize that there's quite a bit of education that we will need to do for customers to get used to the change, and we'll be rolling that out in the months ahead. The other piece that we have proposed is on a self-haul transaction fee. This slide here shows the amount of activity that occurs through both our commercial, which are our large, large-ton loads, versus our residential, which is the very small loads that come in. The cost to process per each trip for a commercial, the dollar value is actually $670, versus on a residential, it's only about $31 per transaction. So what this has shown to us is the, the subsidization that other lines of business are, are providing for our residential self-haul. We do have mandatory garbage collecting for city residents, so the transaction fee, we, we feel will help encourage a greater use of the curbside service. Our, our partners in the, the solid waste system, Spokane County, also has a similar fee, and the amount of revenue this would provide for is approximately $250,000 annually, and it's money that would help us support our ongoing neighborhood cleanups, our illegal dump response, and our legal camping cleanups that are, that are incurred today. One of the areas that we are continuing to invest and support within the solid waste system is that neighborhood cleanup and litter control. We are still anticipating to support the discount for our low-income seniors and disabled individuals. We also rolled out a program a couple of years ago that's been very popular, where we are providing improvements in our graded, in our, our alleys and streets, which were, which were previously not maintained, and those are alleys and streets that we're providing collection services in. We have our big bellies in the downtown, which, which allows for some automated collection of the materials, the waste and the recycling, in a very efficient manner that allows for some compaction. And we will continue to invest in supporting our, our illegal camping cleanup, as well as additional cleanup along the river and special events. This kind of shows an idea for the community about how much we spend in these particular areas, neighborhood cleanups, litter control, illegal camping, as well as big bellies. That amount was over $1.7 million in 2019, and we budgeted a similar amount in 2020. So I touched a little bit on this earlier, the three-year rates. We do have some risks out there. We don't know where recycling is going to go. We don't know whether we're going to continue to have softness in our commodities market. We are looking actively as to how do we repurpose some of the recycled material that has a negative commodity value, such as glass, such as mixed paper, such as mixed plastics, and we're continuing to look at other options for uses of those recyclables. A term we call is circular economy, which is really just taking the materials that have low to no value and repurposing them to an alternative use that could create jobs, could, could create a difference could create a different sort of a product with that reuse. We've got uncertainties around the economic impacts on the businesses from COVID. We've shown that the, we've seen that we have some revenue softness, and this year we don't know how long that will last. And then here's a list of the contracts that are expiring in the upcoming two to three years on our recycling for the Smart Center with Waste Management, our contract with Spokane County for their waste energy use for disposal, our composting contract for our green materials, our ash disposal contract, as well as our power purchase agreement with Avista for selling the excess energy that we have, which really plays into where we have some energy strategy opportunities in the future. This slide here shows for the community what the impacts would be on the rates of the various size of carts. For an example, someone with a 68-gallon cart today who's paying $32.78 a month, that rate would go up to $33.73 in 2021. The yard waste, which is an optional service, is currently $17.29. It would increase to $17.79 in 2021. This graph shows a comparison of other communities in Spokane County, where City of Spokane rates are currently for the 68-gallon cart compared to Waste Management, Sunshine Disposal, and Empire. We're right in that range, some are higher, one is lower. The city of, City of Seattle and Tacoma, you can see, are quite a bit higher than what the City of Spokane residents incur today for their curbside collection. I believe this is the final slide. Our garbage disposal fees at the waste-to-energy would be going from $110 a ton up to $113 a ton in 2021, with a minimum fee of $18, going up slightly to $18.60. I won't go through all these, but it shows you what our green, clean green per ton is and what the minimum fees are as well. These are all reflecting a 2.9% increase. It does show that we would have the self-haul transaction fee in there as well. Just to wrap up on our managing our, managing and meeting our principles on simplicity, stability, sustainability, and equity and affordability for our community. With that, that completes the presentation, and happy to take any questions at the ready.
Councilmember Stratton.
Just a quick question on the neighborhood cleanups. Did you have any useful ground for 2020?
I'm sorry, councilmember, let me mute, and if you could repeat that.
You kind of broke up.
So you talked about the neighborhood cleanups and the cost of the neighborhood cleanups. So for 2020, did we have neighborhood cleanups this year for 2020?
We didn't have any program stuff because of the social distancing that were typical from previous years. We did instead do a number of dump passes throughout some of the neighborhoods that tried to make up for some of that lost community cleanup. So it certainly wasn't to the level that we had in previous years.
Do we, do we know how many dump passes were sent out to the neighborhoods by any chance, just a total?
I don't, well, yeah, I don't have that off top ahead. I can certainly provide that based on some of the information from Neighborhood Services and share that back with council.
Thank you.
You bet.
Other questions from councilmembers? I had a question for you, Scott. Going to the every other week, I'm wondering if that is going to change our full-time equivalents for haulers, or are we going to just save it in less overtime that we've been doing for the last few years?
So what that would do is it would actually reduce the number of drivers and equipment needed, if that was the question that you were asking.
I guess, is it a reduction in, I know it'll be less hours out there because it's only once a week, but I'm wondering, does it have an impact on the full-time equivalent personnel who are, essentially, are we laying off any actual employees because of that under your current plan?
Oh, I got you. No, we are, we are committed not to do any layoffs, so very much in sync with the mayor's plan, no layoffs through this proposal. We would manage the reductions that are needed through just natural attrition and vacancies, but zero layoffs would be proposed under this.
Okay. Thanks. Oh, I should say. Any other questions of Scott from councilmembers?
Council President.
Yes, Councilmember Mumm.
Hi, Scott, thanks for the presentation. How will we know which week we're supposed to put our carts out?
So we'll be going through a fairly robust analysis of our routing and communication to the community. Once this passes, we're already in the process of doing some looks at that today, but we'll be doing all of our commercial, all of our residential recycling rerouting, and that'll line up with outreach to the community to inform on how best to share that information, which days of the week, and which week they'll be getting that. So I would say for the community, look for some upcoming communication and outreach that'll be coming from our department in the near term.
And I always like to take this opportunity to remind everybody that if they focus on their recycling, they might be able to get down to that smaller cart. If you're paying for the big cart right now, maybe, you know, your kids have moved out of the house or wherever, just look at that opportunity, and you might be able to save quite a bit of money.
That, that brings up another question, Scott, that someone asked. If people are having a hard time living within the means of the normal blue bin for two weeks, is there another larger blue bin option?
Yes, we've got a mix of different sizes right now. Our most typical size is the 68-gallon, and we do have, and we are envisioning that there will be requests for 96-gallon carts from those who help them kind of stay the course over those two weeks. That'll be part of our outreach for the community, and we'll be planning on those that want to have an increased size to allow for those materials, we'll be, we'll be working on getting those out to the community.
Councilmember Stratton.
One more, one more question, I promise, last one. So for recycling, are we doing community outreach on the whole issue with glass? That we're not, if I understand it correctly, we're not able to recycle glass at this point in time? So are we, do we have a plan for that, or to let the public know that you may not, you're throwing your glass in recycling when it's not being recycled?
Yeah, yes, thank you for that. It is a, it is a challenge. Our glass today, for the public to know when their glass goes into the blue bin, while it does get sorted at Waste Management, it doesn't go to a third party for reuse. It's currently going for daily cover and road building at a landfill nearby. The alternative to that right now, and we know that's not the option that we want to have, but the alternative to that is putting it in your group, in your brown bin, and that causes all sorts of operational challenges in our boilers at the waste energy. So that's not a good option either. We've been working with other partners in the community, such as Avista, to pilot the use of that glass for bedding their natural gas lines. That has some promise, and should they have some interest in that, we would look at repurposing that glass and taking it out of both the blue bins and the brown bins, but we want to make sure that it's a sustainable practice and model, so that we can completely divert those out of both of those bins. And then that would, that would enable us to, we've got some ideas on pilots to have some community collections throughout the, throughout the city, but we've been hesitant to do that until we have a sustainable place to repurpose those. So you highlight the conundrum that we're, that we're dealing with today.
Thanks.
All right, I'm not seeing any more questions. Why don't we do Ordinance 35954? We have one community member who wants to testify about that, and that's Nicolette Okletree. If you want to hit star three, Nicolette. All right, Nicolette, welcome again. You have three minutes.
Hello, I just wanted to say that I think moving the recycling to being picked up every week, every other week, excuse me, is a great short-term solution, but obviously we're going to have to start brainstorming for some long-term solutions. And I was really glad to hear, Scott, I didn't catch his last name, but I was really glad to hear that they're focusing on trying to figure out new ways to deal with those negative commodity value products like glass, in such a way that they might be able to locally repurpose them and create jobs and value and create products that, you know, that we can use. I know this is going to be a big problem probably for quite a while, especially considering the way China has reduced what they'll accept recycling-wise, but if we can kind of take some of that into our own hands here in the city, again, like he said, we might be able to create jobs in the process, including, I know, there's a small island, it's the southernmost tip of Canada, but locally, they recycle some of their glass and they tumble it like the sea does, like the ocean does naturally, like you find sea glass on the beach, and there's tons of it all over Pele Island. And so what they do locally, and it's a very small, small island, it's actually about the size of Manhattan, but instead of the eight million people, it has about 200 people that live on it, but they recycle their glass and tumble it to make, like, basically sea glass, and they put it in flower beds, and they put it around their little city, and it looks fantastic. So, you know, doing something like this, I think, would be a great, a great thing to do, but also educating the public on the good old three Rs: reduce, reuse, recycle. And reduce and reuse always came before recycling. So if we can kind of get people back into that mentality, I think that we'd be going a long way into solving some of those problems right now while we figure out some of the more longer-term solutions. Thank you.
Thank you for testifying tonight on that issue. There's no more council commentary. We'll have a roll call on Ordinance C35954, changing the recycling schedule. Councilmember Mumm.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President is an aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero, and now we'll go to Ordinance C35955, which was already read, but it has to do with the rates of solid waste disposal, public utilities and services. And there's no public comment. Is there any council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, just thank you, Scott, for the data and the information. I would just say, and I guess maybe I'm just speaking about all of these kind of at once, but first and foremost, appreciate that we're looking at the every other week and that we just approved that. I think that makes a lot more sense than adding a fee to the service. As far as the rest of the rates go, I much prefer, I don't love the $2 self-hauling fee, but I much prefer that to increasing the overall rate that everybody's paying, and at least it's voluntary. It's, it's not something that we're necessarily mandating upon folks, because you don't have to go out to the, to the plant to eliminate your waste. So I, in that sense, I much prefer the $2 fee to any sort of an increase over the 2.9% kind of inflation plus population growth number. And I also am very hopeful that we will see, with those, additional in cleanup in northeast Spokane, which is definitely welcome and something that we would love to see happen. So again, I appreciate all the information and the work that you've put into this, and I will, I will support it.
Any other council commentary? Councilmember Stratton.
I'm sorry, I just got confused because my notes went away. We are on which ordinance?
We are on.
Is this 35?
We are on 35955.
Okay. And is this, let me see, I don't know what happened here tonight, I'm sorry. Is this the one that's the $2 added to the self-haul?
I will ask Scott if you would confirm that. You're there.
Correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Stratton, are you still wanting to talk about it, or did you just want to know that question?
I'm sorry, that was my question. I keep losing my document here. I apologize.
No worries, just want to make sure you're heard. Okay, any other comments, questions? Not seeing any, let's have a roll call. On 55, Councilmember Mumm.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
No.
Okay, Councilmember Kinnear. Council President is an aye. Councilmember Burke. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Okay, that passes six to one, and then that brings us to Ordinance 35956, again, related to the rates of solid waste collection, public utilities and services, and I believe this is the 2.9% for all, all the various rates other than that $2 fee. Any, there's no public comment. Any other council commentary or questions? All right, not seeing any. Then we'll have another roll call. Councilmember Mumm.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton. Okay, Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents an aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Okay, that passes six to one. That will bring us to our special budget ordinances. Ms. Fister.
Ordinances amending Ordinance Number C35857, passed by the City Council, December 16, 2019, and entitled. An ordinance adopting the annual budget of the City of Spokane for 2020, making appropriations to the various funds of the City of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2020, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage and declared an emergency appropriating funds in. Ordinance C35957, general fund municipal court from Department of Justice, $166,048 to various accounts, same amount. This action budgets the Department of Justice grant for the East Central Community Court project. This item relates to OPR 2020-757, which was approved during the 3:30 briefing session.
All right, there's no community comment on this. Any council commentary?
Thank you, Council President.
Yes.
I would like to say.
Yes, Councilmember Wilkerson, yes.
Thank you. You know, there was just a lot of misinformation out there around Community Court, so there was never any opposition to what the court does or the people it serves. We had a great community meeting, and in that community meeting, we found out that no matter who took over East Central, Community Court was like already baked in to that location. And that had been decided by a group of people that are no longer in public service, and there was no notes or minutes or anything that would have let us know that that was already in place. So going forward with full transparency, I think that needs to be known in any other agreements around any... agreements around any commitments we make to Community Court or any other group in the city, because, again, a group of people around a table thought it was a good idea to put it at East Central. It may have been at that time, but times are different. So I will support it going forward, but I will continue to call on transparency in how we do business with the city and others.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilkerson. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I'll just, to some extent, concur with what Councilman Wilkerson just said. My concern was over the location of Community Court and not over this grant. So I support the grant and will vote for it tonight.
Any further council commentary? Is that, okay, I see a hand, sorry. Councilmember Burke.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I think this is a really great idea, and I am really excited to next go over to Councilmember Mum and Councilmember Stratton's district and hopefully get it in West Central Community Center, and then maybe even think about having it up at the South Hill Community Center as well. I think these are really amazing, forward-thinking ideas, and I'm just so thankful we have Community Court here and that we're taking these steps to lessen the likelihood of someone going into the criminal justice system where they don't need to. So, yeah, I'm fully supportive, and I love the location idea, and I'm excited to gain even more of a partnership at East Central and then continue on forward to other community centers and maybe other places in our, in our city. So, thank you.
Any other council commentary? I just wanted to add a special thank you to Pastor Lonnie Mitchell, who hosted a community meeting on this issue, and Councilmembers Wilkerson and Cathcart attended with me along with lots of other people, and I felt like there was a frank sharing of opinions and hopes and dreams and fears, and put it all together, and I thought we got more clarity on where we could go. One of the best takeaways that I took from it was that perhaps we should figure out different names than calling it a court and calling it prosecutors and public defenders and judges at a community center like the MLK Center, and figure out something more proactive of people really embracing their community and transforming their lives. And I think we also all agreed in that room that this is just one program, and really what the Fifth Avenue section of East Central wants is to revitalize and look for community programs that's going to, that will grow the economy and jobs and the vibrancy that has always existed culturally but needs to exist economically. And so I really want, I think this whole conversation and the delay and all of that all focused us on that. So I really want to commend everyone, and I share Councilmember Burke's hope for the West Central and the South. I've said this many a time, but for the last several years, I've been imagining a world where Community Court is not the alternative, it is the main court, and then the alpha court for the more serious situations that aren't as amenable will be the alternative court. But with that, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President is an aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next special budget ordinance, Ms. Fister.
Ordinance C35959, general fund from unappropriated reserves, $500,000 to allocations, operating transfers out same amount, and water and hydroelectric fund from transfer from general fund, $500,000 to unappropriated reserve same amount. This action allows fulfillment of funding obligation of the city to the water and hydroelectric fund based on the sale of existing parking lot to Gonzaga Haven LLC.
There is no community commentary on this one. This finishes up the transaction. Councilmember Cathcart.
Can I just get some more detail on where this is coming from and where it's going to? It's not entirely clear. Is it just we're taking a half a million out of reserves and giving it to the Water Department?
That is correct. Essentially, I mean, the background of it is the city, the previous city council wanted to provide funding for affordable and attainable housing in northeast Spokane, and so the total tran, this was, this is the final piece of the total transaction. And the Water Department made the point that since they're funded by ratepayers, they should not be subsidizing low-income housing, it should come from the general fund.
So when will the allocation for Catholic charities come? Are we supposed to vote on that?
No, so it's not an allocation to them. Essentially, we sold, when I say we, the city sold them the property at, we figured out what the market value was, and we sold it to them for less than the market value, and then this $500,000 tops up the market value to the Water Department.
I see, okay.
Any other commentary or questions? There's no public commentary on this one requested. All right, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President is an aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. And we have one more special budget ordinance.
Ordinance C35967, miscellaneous community development grants funds from CARES Act 19 County, $1,600,000 to CARES Act 19 County same amount. This action allows receipt of CARES funds from Spokane County for capital expenditures related to emergency homeless housing solutions at the Mission and Cannon locations.
All right, so this allows the city to receive CARES grant dollars that's administered by the county on behalf of the entire county, including City of Spokane residents, for both purchasing and reconstruction at Mission, and then just some reconstruction at Cannon. We have one community member request for testimony, and it is Nicolette Okletree. If you want to hit star three, Ms. Okletree. All right, welcome back. You've got three minutes.
This money for these services are essential. I've already seen photos of houseless friends with frostbite. I've already seen toes that have been amputated. It's like déjà vu all over again. A 24/7 shelter with wraparound services, it's essential for our houseless citizens and to keep them alive. And that's just to survive, not to thrive. Ideally, we would like to see folks lifted out of homelessness, but that's nearly impossible when they spend all day seeking out resources and services. Obviously, some sort of combination of an app, a website, or a phone number is needed so that people can definitively know if there are beds available, and if so, what barriers exist to those beds. I know that's something that apparently CHHS has been working on for a while, but even just a Google document that can only be edited by the service providers could be set up within minutes, and it could be updated immediately and give everybody a real picture of whether or not there is bed space available. So there wouldn't be any question as to whether or not people should walk that mile or two to go seek a bed for the night. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we'll turn it over to council, but I just wanted to follow up. We did have a presentation today at Public Safety and Health Committee that Councilmember Kinnear chairs, and they showed us a beta version of a website-based dashboard on all the various shelter options, both low barrier and others as well, and they told us that they thought that would be up in the next two to two and a half weeks. Didn't have a specific date, but many of us have been requesting that, as have you. So we're hopeful that that will be up, public-facing, in the very near future. So thanks for raising that issue. That's all we have for community commentary on this special budget ordinance. Are there any comments or questions from council members? Councilmember Wilkerson.
Councilmember, I just need clarity. Are we refurbishing the building or are we buying the building?
You actually bring up a good point. I think, I think I was incorrect. At one point, we were going to buy the building, they were going to give us money to buy the building. I think the current plan is the Salvation Army is going to buy the building and retain it and maintain it, and so I'm, I think these funds are just for reconstructing. But I'm not 100% positive. I don't know if we have any staff or if somebody has notes on what's posted on our website of exactly what this is coming from.
Council President, that is what the mayor has also told me.
That it's just the reconstruction?
That the transaction, how you described it was how it was described to me as well.
Okay. So the transaction is it's going to end up owned by the Salvation Army. But what I don't have for you, Councilmember Wilkerson, is how much of the money is for the purchase of that building versus how much is for reconstruction? It is, it should be in the special budget ordinance that's posted on our site. But essentially, this is allowing us to accept $1.6 million from the federal government for CARES Act administered through the county. So it's not the contract for actually purchasing or building anything, it's just allowing the money to come to the city.
You're selling this...
Thank you. I think it's great, and I support any money that would help our homeless people. That little snowstorm threw us off for a loop and just once again showed the need and how we need to expand our capacity to serve the residents of Spokane.
Any further council commentary? All right, seeing none, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President is an aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. And that will get us to Resolution 80, if you would like to read that, Ms. Fister.
Resolution 2020-80 condemning the organization and assembly of private armed militia groups which are prohibited under state law.
All right, and we have several people signed up to testify, and I'll just encourage you, if you are wanting to testify, to make sure that you're on the phone and not going by the computer or the Cable 5, because there's a pretty significant delay, and you'll miss your turn on that. Also wanted to mention on this particular resolution, which is a resolution not changing the law, it's focused on state law that exists, but it was amended slightly this afternoon and substituted at the request of the Downtown Spokane Partnership to make it clear that we weren't just asking them not to encourage militias downtown, but to, that they never, our judgment, never had. And I see Mr. Richard is going to be one of the speakers, and he'll talk about that as well. But for community speakers, I'm going to just list you all real quickly in the order that I have you. It's Afshen Yachtan, Mark Richard, Nicolette Okletree, Anwar Peace, Melanie Perry, and Emily Peters. And Mr. Yachtan, if you want to hit star three to raise your hand. All right, welcome to the city council meeting. Please introduce yourself, and you have three minutes.
This is Afshen Yachtan, and, you know, this isn't personal, you may be well-intentioned, but this city council, with the exception of Michael Cathcart, has already proven to be an enemy of the people in regards to disregarding the will and the vote of the people on the fluoridation of our water. Now you're going after the Second Amendment. And respectfully, I'm calling on Police Chief Craig Meidel to direct this police department here in Spokane to continue to uphold their oath to the U.S. Constitution and the Bill of Rights irrespective of any ordinances the city council passes today or in the future. The U.S. Constitution is the supreme law of the land, and people have a right to assemble, and they have a right to protect their businesses and their property. Instead of being worried about lawful armed citizens, you should be worried about BLM rioters and Antifa domestic terrorists. Our president has declared Antifa a terrorist organization, and that's who you should be worrying about. You cite RCW 38.40.120 to condemn unrecognized militia organizing, but the Washington State Constitution, I refer you to RCW 38.04.030, which recognizes that every able-bodied U.S. citizen is a militia. So every single individual regarding the composition of the militia of the state, the RCW, the state constitution of Washington reads, "The militia of the state of Washington shall consist of all able-bodied citizens of the United States and all other able-bodied persons who have declared their intention to become citizens of the United States residing within this state who shall be more than 18 years of age." So this means that every single able-bodied Washington resident is the militia, and the Second Amendment to the U.S. Constitution is clear that our right to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. Lastly, I just want to highlight how important local elections are, and I just want to admonish people to remember in the future to vote for city council members who will respect both the will of the people and our inherent natural rights, which are protected by both the state and the U.S. Constitution. Thank you.
Thanks for participating tonight. And our next speaker is Mark Richard. If you want to hit star three to raise your hand. All right, we're not seeing you, oh wait, all right. Mark, go ahead and introduce yourself, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmembers, my name is Mark Richard, and I represent the Downtown Spokane Partnership. I'll be brief tonight. First of all, I just want to acknowledge Downtown, our organization, and I know that all of the businesses that constitute and make up Downtown feel very fortunate that Downtown is the place where people choose to gather, they choose to come together, and that includes the ability to come together to lawfully protest. Downtown only thrives if we're welcoming to everyone. Most importantly, that expression of folks that feel aggrieved, expressions of acceptance and cultural diversity that really speak to our core of our mission, and that lead to a truly rich experience, leads to a healthy community and a stronger economy. We're certainly not here to argue the case that gentleman just spoke about or to argue against people's rights to bear arms. We certainly believe in those constitutional rights, but we also feel it's clear that the presence of groups of individuals with long rifles did in fact intimidate and impede people's ability to access their freedom of expression. In looking at the resolution, it looks as though council has researched this well and indicates that gatherings of this type are illegal or maybe illegal, and I have to wonder if it isn't for situations just like this, so that people aren't intimidated from being able to express their views and their beliefs. We want to thank the council for bringing this issue forward. We think this also gives us an opportunity to dispel what has been some very damaging rumors against our organization. The Downtown Spokane Partnership in no way, shape, form, or fashion engaged in support or soliciting the presence of groups of militia or militia period in our downtown. We are supporting, on behalf of the exec committee that voted today, we wish to support your resolution. We want to call on groups... We want to call on groups of militia to please leave the protection to train law enforcement. And then lastly, I just want to speak from my heart on behalf of our organization and our board members in telling all of you and our community. We will continue to speak out against any acts of racism, hatred, bigotry, hate crimes, or anything of the like. And we really strive and work. Every one of my employees works hard, and the board supports us in our efforts to make sure that Downtown is in fact that place where people can celebrate and can join together and can convene, no matter what your background, your origin, your ethnicity, or your belief system. And it's our intention to continue to preserve those rights and make sure that Downtown is the thriving, diverse community that we all want it to be. So thank you very much.
And thank you for participating. Our next speaker is Nicolette Okeltry. If you want to hit star three. All right, Nicolette, welcome again. You have three minutes.
First of all, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Burke and Stratton for putting this resolution together and for council considering it. Based on the statements released by Spokane County Prosecutor Larry Haskell and the Spokane Police Department, it's unclear whether or not they indeed understand the law as it is written, and therefore there exists a concern as to whether or not they will be willing or able to arrest and prosecute those who may violate these laws. And what good are any laws if they're not enforced, especially laws that are older than any of us? Some of the problems that they acknowledged, or excuse me, some of the problems they brought up were knowing whether or not somebody was part of a militia or not and knowing what their intent was. It's unclear whether or not both of those combined are necessary and sufficient to count as probable cause or violations of those laws. Those are for lawyers to decide. I'm surprised it took this long for them to get some sort of clear-cut answer. And unfortunately, this seems to be kind of a systemic problem with the Spokane Police Department, which is relying on this sort of ignorance of whether or not they're allowed to enforce the law. So let me make it clear and distinct for them. If it's all about knowing whether or not somebody is militia or not and knowing their intent, I want to direct our attention to the Oath Keepers. So the Oath Keepers, according to the Southern Poverty Law Center, are one of the largest anti-government militias in the United States, and they are just one of the groups that are active here in the Pacific Northwest. The founder of the Oath Keepers, Stuart Rhodes, was just on Alex Jones, his show Infowars just since last week. He said that members of his militia will be at polling locations on Election Day to quote, "protect Trump voters." He also suggested that the possibility of a civil war where his battle-hardened supporters kill the street soldiers and command control of the radical left. Disturbingly, he also said that he would interpret election results such that if a win by a Democratic nominee, Joe Biden, he would consider it illegitimate and evidence that the election had been stolen, and saying that his militia would have to react in accordance to that outcome. He also said that he has signed up poll watchers and others to monitor the election, armed and undercover, drawing their weapons if needed, as well as ones that will show up open carrying. Obviously, I don't have to tell you that this causes a severe problem here in Spokane and across the Pacific Northwest, anywhere where these militias have already said they will be there and that their intention is to intimidate and that they are willing to kill people on the left if Joe Biden is elected. Very big problem for Spokane. I would hate for something to happen.
Ten seconds.
And then the Spokane Police Department says, "I'm sorry, we didn't know what the law was." Thank you.
Thanks for participating this evening. Next up is Anwar Peace, if you want to hit star three. All right, Mr. Peace, if you want to introduce yourself, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Council. My name is Anwar Peace, and I am a Spokane Human Rights Commissioner, although tonight I am speaking as a person of color regarding the issue of armed militias. And I will call it out there, these armed militias are white nationalists. And for me, this white nationalist issue is not some kind of hypothetical menace to my life or well-being. In fact, white nationalism has touched me quite personally and has literally reached into my home life. My confirmation process to become a Spokane Human Rights Commissioner with the City Council was delayed shortly because of my family drama, which came to light publicly. That had to do with my white birth mother, birth family, who had reconnected with me after 40 years after giving me up for adoption. Very few people know that the source of this family drama has to do with the fact that within a year of me moving here, my half-brother publicly declared himself a pagan white nationalist. I was living with my birth mother at the time in the west-central neighborhood, and seven blocks away, my half-brother lived as well. Sadly, all of those in my birth family were unwilling to address or condemn my half-brother and his racist behaviors. I got to the point that I was so scared to go to see family events that my family, that my half-brother was at, because those events, he would come armed with German firearms, and he would bring other like-minded individuals who were armed to family functions. At one of those family barbecues, one of my half-brother's friends yelled at the top of his lungs, "I hate all Jews. I want all Jews dead." And even after that incident, that friend was still allowed to be invited into our house. This family drama was very painful for me. And I hope, I have a lot of hope, on what this community is doing on rejecting white nationalism. I was just on a Zoom meeting with the mayor and the police chief on Friday with the Spokane Alliance, and it's my understanding that both the mayor and the chief understand the dangers of white nationalism in our community. I applaud the City Council for taking this resolution, and in conclusion, I want to say this. My half-brother, I love you, and I'm praying for you. Spokane, stay peaceful out there. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for participating, Mr. Peace. And next is Melanie Perry, if you'd like to hit star three. All right, Melanie, welcome to City Council. Please introduce yourself, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Melanie Perry. I'm with human rights activist coterie Spokane. Sorry, that goes confusing. Yeah, so we've been out there organizing and protesting throughout this summer, and we've just noticed a very clear bias in how the police react to protesters versus those who call themselves a militia or counter protesters, and their willingness to wave around loaded guns versus just people on perhaps our side carrying but not loaded or anything like that. And I just wanted to call on law enforcement to be fair and equal in their response to such things, especially as we move into this scary, uncertain post-election time, which previous speakers have spoken on already, and they've done much better than I think I can. I've been intimidated, actually, after following them. But yeah, so we just need to believe in justice and a good and fair community for all of us as we move forward into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry, for participating. And our last speaker on this topic from the public is Emily Peters, if you want to hit star three. All right, Emily, welcome to the City Council. Please introduce yourself. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Emily Peters. I own a business downtown, and I am another member of the Human Rights Activist Coterie of Spokane, along with Melanie. I have been present for almost every protest since May, either working downtown or participating in the protests, and I've seen firsthand at these events, and of course, secondhand in news nationwide that these so-called militias, and I'm really not sure that militia is an accurate term, but I'll call them militias because they call themselves militias, are not protecting property, but rather they're there to intimidate protesters, and they are open carrying in unsafe ways. I've seen fingers on triggers while the firearms are not aimed at anything, safety off. I've even seen them carrying loaded firearms while drinking outdoors. In national news, we've seen these militia members fire aimlessly into crowds and at buildings while they claim to protect property. They are not effectively protecting property, and property is never worth a human life anyway. As a business owner, I'm not concerned for my business's safety. I have not seen issues. We saw one store looted one time in all this time with all these protests. And I will never support anyone who chooses to harm another person for the sake of my belongings. That is not worth it. With all this said, similar to what Nicolette said, I am concerned that this resolution could be misconstrued by law enforcement and could be used as justification for harassing or arresting people who are simply safely and legally open carrying as individuals independent of militia groups. And I'd like to see something said about what separates one from the other. As a member of HRAC and a registered gun owner, I have safely and openly, I have safely open carried, excuse me, an unloaded weapon with a rose in the magwell at a couple protests, like Melanie mentioned, and I want to be sure that there is a clear differentiation between exercising one's Second Amendment rights in a manner that is not an attempt to threaten or intimidate others and someone who is a part of a militia group. I think that this is, I am for the resolution, but I also want to see more discussion about what specifically it covers, and I want to see that discussed with law enforcement so that we know that when they are enforcing this, when they are enforcing well, RCW 38, they have a clear understanding of what this means. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily, for participating this evening. That brings us to the end of public commentary on this resolution, and it's now in the hands of council members for any commentary or questions. Okay. Oh, Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you, Council President. So first of all, I would like to say that I support this, but also as a council member and a person of color, I did do my own press release around this very issue. We know that the tone that we're in right now is around elections. We realize that the intensifying rhetoric creates concerns that groups may act out, whether in the period between a potential electoral loss or inauguration day. So we know that. So I start looking at what can we do, and I look at this from a regional perspective because it doesn't stop at the borders of our cities. So I think as a group of elected officials, we recognize the importance of aligning civil society and local government. I think we believe in a country that includes everyone and protects the right of every person to live, work, love, and worship free from fear of bigotry, placing value in our accountable democratic practices, and committing to working together to defend democracy and protect our democratic institutions. I value, I think we value, human rights, human dignity, and human life, and those values are more important than our ideology, that we work towards unity and alignment among government leaders in the community, that we strengthen relationships among community groups, faith communities, business leaders, and elected officials. And I, along with the city of Spokane, condemn the public presence of private armed militia.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilkerson. I think I saw Councilmember Cathcart.
Thank you, Council President. I guess I've got a few things to say. I guess I would first start by saying, if you're a white nationalist, a white supremacist, a Klan member, or any affiliate, we don't need you here. We don't want you in Spokane. Make that perfectly clear. I don't know how I can say that any clearer. If you want to go hang out downtown and open carry during a riot, during a protest, intimidate, and create an environment that is very unwelcoming, we don't need that either. I signed a letter in June that basically said those things and said that we can do those sorts of activities. But I also want to make it perfectly clear that I condemn criminal rioting and looting and other forms of violence that have also taken place in downtown Spokane. We have yet to sign a letter to that effect, and we have yet to pass a resolution to that effect. So I want to make that also perfectly clear right here and now. We don't need any of those sorts of violent activities taking place on the streets of Spokane, period. Now, what I want to say, though, is that we have rights in this country and in this state. We have the right to assemble, peaceably assemble. We have the right to petition our government with our grievances. We have the right to bear arms, and in Washington State, we have the right to open carry. And it has yet to be made clear to me how this proposed resolution and the ordinance that's to come will protect rights, will protect those rights while enforcing the provisions that are laid out. And I think we've had, we had a very, very brief five-minute committee hearing on this this afternoon, where not very many of those questions were answered. I've had offline conversations where none of those questions have been answered. I've got a legal analysis from the county prosecutor that basically says that we can't enforce this legally. I've got a legal analysis that I had asked this council to release to show the public what it says that also questions whether or not this can be enforced without violating certain rights. And I can't obviously cite what's in it because it's attorney-client privilege, but just know that that is the essence of what's in it. And so it would be very difficult for me to support something that would very likely run afoul of our constitutional rights, our state rights to open carry, does not identify how we would clearly show how these militia members are organizing, or frankly, any individual open carrying are organizing. Will law enforcement have to, you know, read them their rights and mirandize them and start asking questions and trying to determine whether text messages have been sent, emails have been sent, what the connections are, have they trained together? I just saw an email today from our chief of police questioning whether or not we have to demonstrate that they have actually trained together as a military unit. And so there are just too many questions at this point in time, and none of which have been answered very succinctly or clearly at all. And so I don't see how we can rush to pass something like this that potentially will take away the rights of individuals in our community. But again, if you want to come downtown, arm yourself, create an environment that is unwelcoming, that is intimidating, that promotes some kind of a white supremacist or white nationalist agenda, stay home. Go, stay home in Idaho. Stay home wherever you're from. I don't care. We don't need you downtown Spokane. But we can't pass laws that take away rights that have not been clearly vetted to the extent that they need to be. So I will leave it there for tonight.
Councilmember Burke.
I think Councilmember Kinnear is underhand up. If she would rather go before me, I can go after her.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Thank you, Councilmember Burke, for noticing. I'm probably on the end, Council President, and you can't see me.
You are exactly right. Sorry. You're in the shadows.
I'm going to just wave frantically. Okay. So we did have a public safety meeting today. We did discuss it for a brief amount of time. I did encourage council members to reach out to Mike Armsey, our city attorney, to further answer questions on this subject. I spoke with Mike Armsey for about 20 minutes, half hour, around that today on this very subject, and he indicated that the legal team and police department are committed to finding answers that will cover all the questions that Councilmember Cathcart outlined. And it is a slippery slope, however, they're committed to finding answers. I have every confidence in our legal department. They're a crack team. They're very good at what they do. They will sift through all of the nuances and come up with some good answers. We can't stall. We can't not move forward because we don't have everything. We can't not move forward because we don't have everything in place to, or every answer in place right now. We're running out of time. And I don't think asking people who are white supremacists to stay home is going to make them stay home. It might do the opposite. It might be a challenge for them to come here and raise holy hell. So, I'm going to support this because I want to move forward. I want some answers from our police department. I want answers from our legal team. I think they can come up with that. They've done it before. I have confidence they can do it again. Thank you.
Councilmember Burke.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a lot to say on this topic, but I will definitely try to keep it brief. First of all, this is a resolution. It's non-binding, and we're just making a statement here because we have no jurisdiction over what we tell our officers to do. But this is a guideline and a hope that our officers will take this seriously and do what is right and do their job, which is protecting us. And we know that these militia and vigilantes are coming downtown, and they have been intimidating community members, and it is not okay. I've heard officers say it might be hard for them to figure out if they can arrest somebody or jump into an action. Well, to me, it seems like they haven't had a problem doing that with people who are experiencing homelessness. And I think that they can figure it out, just like they do with every other law, that might not be straightforward. They do what they need to do to protect people. And in this case, I am, you know, really counting on our officers to do their job and to make sure that we can continue to make our community safe. And this is on them. And we are doing what we can as a city council to stand up for what is right. And I, I am really passionate about this because there is no gray line here, and it is not confusing. When there are people who are threatening and trying to take over and trying to hurt people and intimidate people, you know what they are doing. And if the police officers are not taking this seriously, they need to make sure to have a wake-up call. And this is the wake-up call. And I am fully supportive of this. And I think just generally, it comes down to, for me, how much do we care about human life versus public property or private property? And for me, I will always, always, 100% pick the human life over private property because private property can be fixed. Private property can be mended. Private property can be rebought and sold. A human life cannot be given back. And this is not a joke. This is serious. And, you know, we heard from one of our community members who owns a business downtown, and it was very, very delightful to hear her talk about how she believes in more of a, she believes in more of a human life than she does for private property, because that is what our community needs to do and the direction we need to go. And this is a statement from me and the rest of the council members who support it, to our officers, to make sure that they do what is right. Do their job. Protect Spokane. Thank you.
Councilmember Mum, I think I saw your hand.
Yes, thank you. Earlier today at public safety, I was contemplating waiting a week or so until we got some of these answers back from the city attorney's office. And they got right back to me this afternoon. And I just wanted to share that my question was about, this is a state law. It's been on the books for a century. Is that right? And what was the problem? I mean, why couldn't we necessarily enforce it? And it has to do with a legal issue with municipal courts, is what I'm being told. And so, in order for them to be able to enforce all the way through the judicial process, there might be some steps that we need to take. And while I appreciate you reached out to our county prosecutor, I do rely on our city attorney and our Attorney General for the state to help us wade through these. And certainly, we can have conversations with the county prosecutor, but the county prosecutor falls under the same state law, and the county does as well, as we do in the city. So, I'm just happy to support this for now. And we are not making any decisions. It is a resolution in terms of changing code or creating code at this time. And so, I'm happy to support this so we can get those answers.
Councilmember Stratton. Oh, wait. Councilmember Stratton.
I wanted to thank Mark Richards and Emily. And Emily, I'm sorry, I think she was the business owner downtown. I didn't get your last name. But I wanted to thank you both for your testimony, because your testimony reflects what we're trying to do here. And that is protect our citizens, protect our businesses, but maintain a balance. I have no intention of trying to step on anybody's rights to bear arms. I grew up with guns. I have family members that are, that own guns. But I do have serious issues with those people that carry guns, like Councilmember Cathcart said, that come down to our downtown core and other areas to intimidate and frighten people. We have got to, as Councilmember Burke said, make a statement. This is not acceptable. We need to work together as a community. And we need to work with the police to determine how we're going to handle those kinds of issues that are in a gray area. But if you are somebody that is on Facebook, you are somebody that is sending emails, and you are threatening people, you don't go out downtown with a gun, and you're not welcome downtown with a gun. I have received enough emails from citizens who are truly afraid to be out tomorrow night, on election night, because they don't feel safe. And when people don't feel safe, we have to step up and work together as a community to find ways to keep people coming downtown and enjoying their neighborhoods and raising their children. So, I think this is a move forward to good conversations with police, with businesses, with council, with government entities, with the courts, to have this discussion. It's time, it's time to deal with it, and it's time we move forward in a way that provides some solutions and a way for us to help protect not only each other but the community. So, I will be supporting that. Thanks.
And I just wanted to add also my support. I've been a constitutional rights lawyer for many years, and I like to say that I support all the amendments. They're all important. The Second Amendment is important. None of the amendments are absolute. You can't yell "fire" in a crowded theater, even though that sounds like free speech. And the Second Amendment also has limits. Probably the most protective and enthusiastic endorsement of the Second Amendment from our U.S. Supreme Court is a case called Heller versus the District of Columbia. It was written by Justice Scalia, and it said that individuals had the right to protect their homes with firearms in their home. But Justice Scalia also made it clear that those rights weren't absolute. You couldn't have machine guns. Felons couldn't have arms. Mentally ill people couldn't have arms. And armed militias, private armed militias, were not legal. And he cited the U.S. Supreme Court case of Presser versus Illinois from 100 years earlier. That was exactly what we're talking about here. People armed in groups, displaying those arms, marching together, working together, and intimidating people. And back over 100 years ago, the U.S. Supreme Court said that is not protected by the Second Amendment. And Justice Scalia, the champion of gun rights, said that is not protected by the Second Amendment. So, we're looking at a law tonight, and we're just simply asking our police to explore it and use it as a tool to protect downtown and our community members. As Councilmember Mum mentioned, it's a law that's been on the books for 100 years, and nobody has had it struck down under our state constitution or the U.S. Constitution, because it's not that complex of a law. You don't have to prove that someone is a member in an organization. You just have to prove that they are marching with other people with firearms downtown in an organized manner. And then, in such, it implies that it's intimidating. That's all that's against the law. It is not against the law to go downtown and open carry yourself. It is when you start organizing yourself in a group and marching the way we saw on Facebook video and in person on, in the end of May this year. We saw it, and people weren't apologetic about it. They were wearing kind of similar uniforms. They were talking. They were admitting they were in a group. They were admitting they were organized, and they were down there for their own purpose. That's simply illegal under Washington State law. And our police department wasn't aware of that. They thought that somehow the Second Amendment or the First Amendment might outweigh that behavior. And this resolution simply brings it back to their attention. And already, in just the two weeks that it's been pending before them, they've reached out to our legal department to start to get advice. We have had dialogue back and forth with case law and statutory interpretation, and they're starting to understand what they can do and can't do so that they can protect us and frankly, protect themselves. They are equally at risk of a large group of people openly displaying semi-automatic weapons when they're trying to keep the peace for themselves. So, this law is meant to protect them as much as anyone. So, I applaud the council and all the, so many community members that asked us to simply make a statement that our police can enforce the law that's over 100 years old, is endorsed by the U.S. Supreme Court, not the exact law, but very similar laws. There are similar laws in all 50 states. This is not anything radical. It's not anything new. It's straight-up Second Amendment, First Amendment, and the right to life, liberty, and property for all of us. And it just keeps one group, just because they're organizing themselves in public with arms, from intimidating or scaring people, whether they intend to or not. So, I'm happy to support this, and I applaud our police department for looking for legal advice and our legal department for starting to dig in on this. And as it says right at the end, perhaps it should be included in the municipal code so that it's not subject to the county prosecutor's interpretation and it's subject to our judges. But until that time, the police are still free to enforce it. And hopefully, they'll do it like they do so many other things. They'll use education and counseling first before they actually try to arrest anyone. With that, we'll go to a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents, an aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes six to one. I want to thank everyone for the quality conversations, regardless of the perspective that we all had on it. And also, I want to especially thank Councilmembers Stratton and Burke for sponsoring this. That brings us to the end of action on resolutions and final reading ordinances, but we now have some first reading ordinances. Oh, say that again? Oh, yeah, that's coming after that. Yeah.
Ordinance C. 35960 of the City of Spokane, Washington, adopting a six-year citywide capital improvement program for the years 2021 through 2026 and amending the citywide capital improvement program as referenced in Appendix C. of the City of Spokane Comprehensive Plan. Ordinance C. 35961 relating to the pre-treatment requirements, amending Spokane Municipal Code Sections 13.03A, .0101 through 13.03A, .1204 of the Spokane Municipal Code, adopting new Sections 13.03A, .0200, 13.03A, .0412, and 13.03A, .1106 to Chapter 13.03A Spokane Municipal Code, repealing Sections Spokane Municipal Code 13.038, .1105, .1501, and .1502 and setting an effective date. Ordinance C. 35962 relating to the rates of wastewater and sewer public utilities and services, amending Spokane Municipal Code Sections 13.03, .1004, .1006, .1008, .1010, .1012, .1018, .1020, and .1022 to Chapter 13.03 of the Spokane Municipal Code, repealing Sections Spokane Municipal Code Section 13.03, .1014, and 13.03, .1016 and setting an effective date. Ordinance C. 35963 relating to the rates of the Water and Hydroelectric Department and Wastewater Management Department for Utility Services to properties within designated and established public development authorities, adding a new section, 13.03, .1011, to Spokane Municipal Code Section 13.03, and new sections, 13.04, .20051, and 13.04, 20061, to Spokane Municipal Code 13.04 of the Spokane Municipal Code, and setting an effective date. Ordinance C. 35964 relating to the rates of the Water and Hydroelectric Department, amending Spokane Municipal Code Sections 13.04, .2002, .2004, .2005, .2008, .2010, .2012, .2014, .2015, and .2016 to Chapter 13.04 of the Spokane Municipal Code, and setting an effective date. And Ordinance C. 35965 relating to the rates for capital charges, amending Spokane Municipal Code Section 13.035, .500, to Chapter 13.035 of the Spokane Municipal Code and setting an effective date. Further action is deferred in the first reading ordinances.
All right, so you can see, we're going to have a lot of more municipal utility rates next week, as well as the six-year capital improvement plan. We have two matters left of special consideration that were taken from the consent agenda from last week in advance to the legislative agenda for this week, and they have to do with police vehicles. But go ahead and read those.
Okay. S. 1, purchases by Fleet Operations for Police Department using Washington State Contract Number 05916 of A., two police K. eights from Columbia Ford Longview, Washington, $97,254.31, including tax; B., two police Tahos from Budclary Chevrolet Longview, Washington, $94,377.38, including tax.
Councilmember Kinnear, I know, one of the things we were waiting for from last week was the Fleet Services is supposed to give us a report on the lifetime cost of purchase and operation for gasoline diesel vehicle versus an electric vehicle. And I don't know if we were, under state law, we're supposed to consider that. I don't know if you had any updates from Fleet.
I, I did ask Chief Mydl for that information. He said he would provide it. I looked at the participants. I don't know if he is on the line. It's hard to tell, because they're just call-ins, so there may be other individuals. So, I see Hannah Lee shaking, or going, shaking her head no. So, I cannot tell you, because I've not been given that information. I can tell you that council already approved these grants, and so, we're now just approving the purchase. And there is a lifespan on them. So, if they're not approved, we could risk losing them. And I don't know what that length of time is either.
Is, is there?
Do you want to delay a week?
Yeah. First, I'm just going to put a call out there in case there might be, oh.
Can't hear you.
I know. I keep, I think Hannah Lee and I are double muting each other. But I'm just going to put a call if there happens to be any city staff on the call somehow that wants to speak up. You can hit a star three if you're listening in. Nobody is. So, yeah, I would request a motion to defer for a week, just so that we can get that information. I know it is time-sensitive. I don't think it was, today was the deadline, otherwise, we would have had some staff people here. But we do, in order-
I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to make that motion to defer for one week until we can get answers to such questions.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. I'll just add that it is a state law requirement that we have to check that box. So, I'd like to follow the state law on that. Any, all those in favor of deferring for one week, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, name? All right. That's deferred for one week. All right, that is quite a bit of work we did this afternoon and this evening. Again, I appreciate everyone's engagement, the public and our council members and staff. It is the eve of election, so I trust, I've got my "I voted" sticker, thanks to Mark Carlos, and I hope everyone has voted. And if you haven't, use a Dropbox, is what we're all saying. I think I was listening to Mr. Councilmember Cathcart today, that it looks like we're going for our all-time turnout record, and that's pretty exciting when everyone participates regardless of their points of view. So, take care, be safe, everyone. Our meeting is adjourned.